So, John, you missed my excuse if I bail. I was billeted over a nightclub last night and had to change accommodations. So I got virtually no sleep. That and the time changes is about to kick me. So I'll see how far I can go. So it's switching hour. Well, seven o'clock. I'd like to call this city council meeting of Lakewood for Monday, November 1st, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Volkey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wayland?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. We now move to proclamations and presentations. And this is November, and we always have a special proclamation for Veterans Day here in Lakewood, which has for any very long period of time been a military community. We're going to take this proclamation a little bit differently tonight. We're going to share reading it by members of the council who have connections with the armed services. And to start off, I'd like to call on Command Master Sergeant Mike Branstadter, U.S. Army retired. Command Sergeant Major, excuse me. I was around Air Force Master Sergeants today, so.
Well, the City of Lakewood proclamation. Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high calling to serve and have helped protect and secure the United States of America at every turn. Whereas the United States of America's veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation from some of the most brutal and ruthless tyrants, terrorists, and militaries the world has ever known. And our veterans stood tall in the face of grave danger and enabled our nation to become the greatest force for freedom. And whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service, and.
And now I'd like to call on Councilmember Mary Moss, a former Air Force spouse who also serves in that capacity. Mary, you're not coming through well.
Okay. And whereas, is that better?
Yes.
And whereas we lay that we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefits. And whereas on Veterans Day, we salute the men and women who have proudly worn the uniforms of the United States of America and the families who have served alongside them. And we affirm our sacred duty as citizens to express our enduring gratitude, both in words and in action for the services. And whereas there these brave men and women and their selfish sacrifices continue to inspire us today as we work to advance peace, extend freedom around the world, and.
And now I'd like to call on Deputy Mayor Jason Wayland, former captain, United States Army.
And whereas, as many veterans face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations, we can ensure that those who have served their nation receive the resources they deserve. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded provides a source of permanent inspiration to ensure our unwavering support as a community. And whereas through their commitment to freedom, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure. And the City of Lakewood now resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered.
And now, as a former Navy lieutenant, it's my honor to conclude. Now, therefore, the City of Lakewood Council hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day and the month of November 2021 as Veterans Appreciation Month. In the City of Lakewood, it encourages all residents to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and to actively support our local veterans and their family members. Proclaim this first day of November 2021. John Anderson, Mayor. It's with regret that we will not be able to have a veteran ceremony live in council chambers this year, it looks like. But that doesn't diminish our support. We now move to the youth council report.
We have Colonel Roerman here today for two-two, Striker Brigade Mayor.
Wow.
Well, that's my not having the full script in front of me, Colonel.
Well, sir, and then I was having issues logging in as a viewer, not a panelist. So I was working through some technical difficulties to get in to actually, you know, listen in and see what was going on, or more than just listen in and see what was going on, so.
Well, thanks for joining us.
Sir, it's my pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, on behalf of the soldiers here, soldiers and veterans here in the Second Striker Brigade, JBLM, as well as all the veterans that live in the Lakewood community, thank you very much for the invitation. Thank you very much for the presentation of the proclamation. From my perspective, it's great to see and hear the, you know, the joint nature of this wonderful community. And as the proclamation stated, as we think of November 11th, is now commemorated as Veterans Day, to honor all of those who have served our nation, as many of you has. I can only imagine now what it was like on that very first Armistice Day in 1919, when it was, you know, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, when, you know, the battlefields there in Europe fell silent. And having served on other battlefields in other years, not as far back as 1919, I'm sure that, just like on that November day, that there were many soldiers that were very, felt very fortunate and very thankful to be able to come back to a great community like the City of Lakewood. For me personally, I have returned back to my first duty station here back when it was Fort Lewis. So 20, just over 20 years ago, right around 20 years ago. And coming back here is truly like, you know, has that feeling like we have come home. My family feels that way as I do. So whether it's been able to enjoy the shops, the restaurants there in the City of Lakewood, or just getting to know more of the people in the City of Lakewood, it's truly been wonderful to be back home. And although, as you know, the purpose of Veterans Day is to be able to ensure that the service and sacrifice of our veterans is not forgotten or not overlooked. And as that was declared in the declaration, it's truly seen around the City of Lakewood, whether we're talking the flags and the signs of support. It's heard with kind statements from the people in the City of Lakewood. But I think most importantly, it's truly felt by the veterans and felt by, you know, many of my soldiers who live in the City of Lakewood or live in this community. So although we, you know, we've come from, you know, many different walks of life from across the nation, that I truly believe that the City of Lakewood has, you know, embodied and truly acts upon what you've stated in the proclamation, and that's seen on a day-to-day basis. So it's an honor to be partnered with the City of Lakewood as a part of the Community Connectors Program. And I definitely look forward to engaging in the future and being able to expand upon our partnership with the City in the weeks and months ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel. Is there anyone in council who wishes to add anything before we move on?
Lakewood. I just would like to say thank you and for your service. And also mention that my grandfather was in the Air Force and a nephew is in the Army and one in the Marines currently. So thank you. I really appreciate it. I have a great connection with that.
Thank you. Well, thanks. Thanks again, Colonel, for all you do. And we hope that we can enhance our Community Connector Program by more personal contact in the months to come.
I. Yes, sir, and looking forward to the speaking at the Rotary Club here on the 12th of November.
Oh, good.
Yeah, just earlier this evening here in San Antonio, I ran into one of your predecessors, Colonel Retired Lou Ziesman. So, you know, those connections that seem friendship sometime are our long-lasting lifetime friendships. So thanks again for all you do.
Well, thank you, sir.
Then we'll now move to the Youth Council Report.
Mayor Anderson, we have Josephine Kaiser from Harrison Prep joining us this evening.
Josephine, welcome.
Hi, how are you all doing today?
Great. You have the floor.
Well, first, I want to thank you all so much for allowing me to be here. It is such an honor. And I want to thank you all regardless of your influence in the military. I sat the Youth Council and throughout all of our schools really appreciate your service. We know the dedication and the sacrifice and the impact of this decision you guys have made. I see it in my friends, in my parents, my grandparents, and the duty that calls towards those positions, and we really appreciate it. So thank you so much for, thank you so much for making that impact for the United States of America. But moving forward, we ended up having a meeting today to discuss possible youth summit for the year of 2022. Right before quarantine started, we had planned on creating a youth summit for that focused on youth empowerment. And we really kind of wanted to carry on that idea, especially in light of the different problems that we had encountered after COVID-19, especially seen in youth today. We realized that Lakewood youth need to be really made aware of the resources available to them in the community and to be heard regarding their experiences. We know that there are the resources out there and that there are the, there is the publicity, but youth just aren't able to see that or have the ability to engage in them. So we also determined that if this is kind of what we want to make the topic of the summit, that the best way to do this is in a face-to-face event with a virtual option for max outreach. We also know that that is very idealistic. But we started planning another youth empowerment summit for next year. And in the next few months, we will be starting to plan logistics. And tonight, we specifically talked about how we can meet the needs of Lakewood youth. It will focus ideally on three areas, including youth mental health. As we have found in multiple schools, that has been a problem or topic that many are interested in looking forward through. We also know that jobs and the ability to ensure that adults and young adults are able to provide for their families, whether or not they're working for their parents or their parents are helping to support their children. We know that that is a need. And many youth are actually affected by the inability or the lack of, the lack of money to help support their family. And lastly, we also want to look towards other support services, including ability for students to have access to transportation, food, as well as safety and other areas as well. We know that that is a lot of information to cover in just one day for a summit, but we'll be spending the next few months figuring out how to turn this big pill to swallow into something that is more accessible and that has a higher impact in a way that it can flow nicely through and have greater connections. We also talked about different incentives to make sure that youth would prefer an in-person option over Zoom, which might include like goodie bags or food that we can provide students, as well as other different things that we thought different youth would be interested in kind of receiving, as well as the main, main experience. We also talked about different ways we can measure and evaluate the impact of the event. We had reflected on planning for our previous and realized that last time we had created before and after survey, they essentially were the same thing, but it would help to measure how well students felt like they could be supported after hearing about the different things offered through the event. We are going to be partnering with Lakewood's Promise on this and are very excited to kind of be expanding upon, expanding upon these ideas. And as we keep planning, we will make sure to keep you updated on all of our progress. Do any of you guys have any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for Ms. Kaiser?
Yes, Mr. Wayland.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you very much for your service on the Youth Council. I think you've done a great job both presenting the information to us and describing a fantastic youth summit focused on empowerment. My question is a little bit, how do you plan to kind of get your, your hands around some of the issues on youth mental health to come up with some action items? Are you guys doing a survey or kind of anecdotal sort of research from your peers? What's the thought there?
So last year, we really focused on mental health and being able to find what youth need and some of the problems that they encounter that can primarily affect their mental health. Recently, I believe we had the, I forget what it's called. It's an ESS survey that we do in school. And it basically, it tells us the different problems or necessities that students need. And unfortunately, we found that last year, 14 students within our school district seriously considered suicide. And by September, 15 students had it as well. So that is something that we really want to provide resources for. I know Willa Warren, she is a part of Lakes High School, and she said that there they had hired a new, they had hired a new counselor to help students kind of associate with the different things or challenges that they might be encountering. I know at our school, we recently lost a administrator and that had a heavy impact. But thankfully, a lot of our counselors are really cooperating with our students to give them some time to grieve and making sure that they also recognize that. So just making sure that everything that people are kind of experiencing, regardless of whether you're a non-student, is acknowledged. And to be able to see that, whether that's through different resources, surveys as the ones conducted statewide, or through the different programs that the city or outside the city offers. We really want to make sure that students are able to receive those resources. And something that we talked about was providing students with the list of those resources to take home after attending the youth summit. That way, they could physically have the tools in their hands to make a difference in the community. It's not something like they could just forget about or say, oh, that was a nice experience. Too bad I can't do something about it. They physically have the tools and now it's up to them to do something. So we really wanted to provide, whether it was mental health resources or different companies or associations that would be willing to partner up students to make their dreams or that impact come true and into the community.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for that. Let us know how we can participate if it would be helpful. And I'm most interested not only in the mental health piece, but also in the support services, like how we can perhaps better help with transportation to address some of the needs there. So we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone else happen to have any other questions?
Anyone else in the council? Not seeing any. Just a personal comment, I was very impressed with the earlier youth summit. And it appears that this is going to even be a better one. It's well thought out and well presented. And so I commend you for pursuing that and I look forward to it. So thanks for your presentation tonight and for all you and your contemporaries do for the community.
Thank you so much for having me. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Take care.
We now move to the Clover Park School District.
Mayor Anderson, we have Mr. Schaper scheduled to be here this evening, although I do not see him in our list of attendings.
I don't see, I don't see any of the directors on here. We'll come back to that. Let me know if he signs on. And we move to public comment. This is when any member of the public may comment on any matter of pertinence to the council, whether or not it's on the agenda, please submit your comments to three minutes. There will be a timer on screen. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Linda Farmer, Lakewood, Washington. Raise your virtual hand to be recognized. When virtual hand is up, you'll be called on. It will stay up after you've had the opportunity to participate, but you will be muted for the remainder of the meeting after your three minutes is up. You can participate via telephone at 1-253-215-8782 and entering the Zoom meeting ID of 868-7263-2373, which you see on your screen. We're going to zoom.us/join and enter that same meeting number, 868-7263-2373. So.
Mayor, you might point out that we do have the four public hearings tonight. So if they want to speak to a particular item, they might.
We have, yeah, we have public hearings on the mid-biennium budget, the property tax levy ordinance, the American Rescue Plan Act budget ordinance, and the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. If you wish to speak to any of those subjects, you may. But in order to have it included on the record, you must speak when we have the public hearing on those items later on the agenda. This is the open public comment period. And so looking to the agenda, the folks who have their hand up, first up is Mr. Dennis Haugen. Mr. Haugen, your three minutes is starting. We'll wait a moment here as in case there's technical difficulties. I see your microphone is unmuted and your hand is up, Mr. Haugen, but we cannot hear you. And we'll move to Dennis, Julian Wheeler, excuse me, Mr. Wheeler.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's too bad. Oh, my name's Julian Wheeler, Lakewood resident. And this is probably going to be the last public comment, you know, announce Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee meeting as its chair. Although I do want to say, I hope Dennis is doing okay. I, I've heard stories of people, you know, experiencing health crises in such moments. So I hope he's doing okay. But I wanted to just say, our next regular session is going to be Tuesday, November 9th, at nine o'clock in the morning on Zoom. And always on that note, I want to thank the council for continuing with a remote attendance option, which is very important for everyone, including people with accessibility needs. We are looking for new members and new ideas. And we do work pursuant to the Accessible Communities Act of 2010 to help expedite funds for, in our case, our scope of work is Pierce County, in Pierce County communities. And we welcome everyone who wants to, even just to visit. And I also want to mention that, you know, the overlapping issues we have out there in the communities, of course, they overlap with veterans' issues. So I just, as a disabled veteran myself, I want to acknowledge others in the same or even more dire circumstances. And also to acknowledge the Gold Star and Blue Star families of people who, well, in the case of the Gold Star families, people who never returned. And I always hope and pray for the welfare of the MIAPOW, excuse me. And so happy November, Veterans Day month and Washington's birthday month. But I just wanted to thank the council for your work. And a part of my, you know, what we do in the ACAC is to suggest that when a city or county or other governing body has its annual budget season, like around now, this does not pertain directly to the item on the agenda, but whatever doesn't make the final cut, feel free to approach us with the item as a proposal for accessibility improvement in Pierce County. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you all for your work. And, you know, I just, I hope Dennis is doing okay because it's unusual. He doesn't take advantage of the moment when he's called upon. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you. So in case you're there, you have a second chance, Mr. Haugen. Your on is muted.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Haugen has actually contacted me by phone, which he does sometimes. And he's saying it's all broken up. So I'm just going to let him know that, you know, we've done what we can do. I don't know that there's anything else that can be done. Trying to get a hold of us, but we got to keep the show rolling.
I'll come back at the end. We'll keep moving.
Okay.
And we'll move to Laurel Homestead.
Hello, this is Laurel Homestead. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm not sure if this is the moment to speak about this, and you can correct me, please, if you need to. I would like to discuss the street maintenance that's going on for the next, from 2022 to 2025. Is this a proper time to take a few minutes to have a discussion?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. So I'm a longtime resident of Lakewood. Matter of fact, my grandfather started Lakewood Refuge Service. And I have been an advocate for Mount Tacoma Drive down here. I guess they're looking at Whitman down to Motor Ave. But I also am understanding that is on the list for 2025. And I am on the call to hopefully advocate that it gets put up to the front instead of to 2025. And that's what I'm petitioning tonight.
It's noted. I know you're a new participant. We don't have a back and forth on this. It's for your comments and we listen, so. But your concerns noted.
Okay, thank you very much. Would it be helpful for me to come on a few other different times to continue to bring this before the council? Or would this be sufficient?
I think, yeah, I would suggest to talk with Mr. Wayland, who's an advocate.
Please do.
Okay. So would you prefer that I contact you at a different time besides this council meeting? Perfect. Thank you very much for your time. And I really appreciate that you have, that the City of Lakewood definitely recognizes our veterans. I'm a veteran's mom, veteran's grandmother. I really appreciated hearing that at the beginning of the meeting. And I sincerely appreciate Lakewood for standing up for that. Great. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hello, my name is Christina Minetti. I'm a resident of Lakewood. In the materials about the tree preservation kind of benefit process in the agenda today, I noticed that some people in City Hall have expressed an interest in perhaps cooperating with other municipalities in terms of protecting the Gary Oaks, since it's clearly a regional problem. I wanted to share with you today that last week, a member of the Audubon Society recounted to me terrible crimes against Gary Oaks that have been committed just next to Lakewood in Parkland. In one instance, a small grocery store that had been there for a long time had 13 Gary Oaks on the property. But when it was redeveloped and two duplexes were built there, the trees were all completely destroyed. There were also other terrible stories she shared with me, and understandably, she and her husband were clearly very upset. Parkland, as unincorporated Pierce County, I was told, is subject to Pierce County rules related to the trees. While it's wonderful that Lakewood is showing an interest in the fate of its own wonderful trees, it would be such a point of pride for its citizens if Lakewood would take a leading role in spearheading the protection of Gary Oaks in the greater area. By instituting tough rules about tree protection, Lakewood will set a precedent and could wield influence with the county, which would be put to shame for its neglect of trees. Lakewood could be a role model for the region, a city to be emulated. Perhaps the city of Lakewood should request with the appropriate state authorities that the Gary Oaks be given special protection at state level, as this often seems to be a real hurdle to having meaningful tree protection codes across the board. Please let us know how we may help you achieve this. Thank you all, Mayor and City Council members, for having listened to all of us so patiently these past five months. It means so much to us that we have been heard and that with your plan to amend the tree preservation code, you have already taken the first steps in the process leading to serious tree preservation in the city of Lakewood. We look forward to the day when people say, look how Lakewood manages to protect its trees. If Lakewood could do it, we can too. So thank you very much, everybody. I really, really appreciate all the time that you've given us during all these public comments and everything else. We're very touched that you put it on the agenda, and we'll hear more about that later, I guess. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. We now move to Sean Arant.
Hello.
Mr. Arant, you're on.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. My name's Sean Arant. I live in Tacoma. Want to talk a little bit about stewardship, what that means to me. I think Lakewood is situated in a very unique area between Gary Oaks, the lakes, there's several creeks, several salmon berry streams. You've got the unique Gary Oak Savannah ecosystem there. And I think these are all very, very worth protecting. I think Lakewood is also facing several environmental issues. There is contamination from JBLM, from fire suppression chemicals. A lot of the streams are not well maintained. I visited Clover Creek. It's full of garbage. That is a salmon bearing creek. Lakes, I've heard that they have suffered from nutrient pollution runoff that causes toxic algae, eutrophication, the die offs and that kind of stuff. I really think it would behoove the city council to strengthen the tree preservation code. But I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed in terms of environment and in terms of climate. And I think a really, really solid way to do that would be to create a citizen advisory council on the environment and climate. In Lakewood, we have one in Tacoma. You would appoint members from the community who have this knowledge and can share it with you all and make really solid policy suggestions. You know, like as an oak advocate, I want to see y'all get to the place where we're cutting down as few trees as possible. But I also want to see y'all get to the place where we're bringing back the rest of the ecosystem and planting more trees. I think that's, that's a good thing to do. I mean, that's what stewardship means. That's taking care of the land. It takes care of us. It's the right thing to do. You know. Shout out to our veterans, right? But it's also Native American Heritage Month. They're key partners in the region, right? If we want to honor the treaties, we need to take care of the salmon. We should, you know, try to restore the Oak Savannah, which is another important, was another important food crop for them in terms of chemists. So yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. So thank you all for your time. And again, I hope you consider creating a new advisory committee to focus on the issues of stewardship and the environment. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Ado Equitas.
How are you guys doing tonight? I hope everybody's doing well. My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the White Panther Party. We've heard a lot tonight about the veterans, the children, and the environment. All three very important things. All three things our particular organization holds very dearly. There's been a lot of great ideas thrown around. And hopefully you guys consider some of those. Christina, Sean, thank you guys for speaking so eloquently. Colonel, thank you for your service. If you're still on, I apologize, I forget your name. Councilman Branstadter, thank you for your service. Councilman Moss, I realize that you said that it was your husband that served, but anybody that says that a military spouse isn't service, they, they should be thinking of something else. All of these ideas that have been thrown around have been amazing. And judging by some of the things that are happening with some of the amendments going through different pushes to provide funding for programs, it shows that the city council is listening, and that's good. I feel that we have hammered just as hard on the topic of police violence and murder in Lakewood streets. And I don't see the action there. So a lot of these ideas are great. Maybe we can put some of the ideas to police violence. Now, the parties are not anti-police. I know that a few of you feel that way. A few of you seem to understand that that's not the case. We are anti-racism, and we are anti-bias of police officers. We are anti-murder. And for some reason, that just doesn't seem like it's getting the whole shebang. And it should. And that kind of makes me sad because Lakewood is a beautiful city. It's a wonderful city. And hopefully, if we stop cutting down the trees and the people, it'll continue to thrive. I'll power to the people.
Next is Eric Sybel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. I'll keep my comments brief. But I just wanted to say I'm very gratified that the city is taking seriously the idea of tree preservation in our city and is moving forward with substantive steps to engage the public in this effort. We hope, I myself as a member of the Tacoma Audubon Society and the Lakewood Gary Oaks Conservancy, to have a seat at the table so that we can get our input into the process and work with you to affect positive change. On a somber note, I want to let you know, you may not know this, if you don't live along the creek or don't walk by it, but Clover Creek is currently dry, and it has been for months, even despite the rain that we received last week. And I mentioned that just simply to say that we are, the effects of climate change are here, and we're experiencing them locally. And to combat that, I feel strongly that we should use every resource at our disposal, including the trees that we have that mitigate the effect of the heat that we receive and that provide shade and sustenance for our wildlife. Anyway, to that end, I would also strongly ask that you consider a moratorium on issuing tree cutting permits until we can go through the whole process of understanding and implementing an effective and public tree policy, tree restoration and preservation code in the city. Thank you very much for your time and for your efforts on our behalf. We really appreciate it. We do.
Next up is James Dunlop.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I'm commenting on the regulation of marijuana business in Lakewood. And I should say I don't use marijuana, and I don't have any interest in the subject. Many people in Lakewood are dismayed by the city council's apparent and relentless unanimity. We see the seven members of the council appearing to act as a monolithic block, week in, week out. However, there are times when council members do act independently. For example, May the 21st, 2018, when the council voted on Ordinance 683 to prohibit the production, processing, and retail sale of marijuana. Ordinance 683 was a 4-3 vote with council members Anderson, Wayland, Branstadter, and Barth supporting it, and council members Moss, Bocky, and Simpson voting against. The Suburban Times reported that Councilmember Branstadter justified Ordinance 683 by saying, "Short-term money is not a good trade for long-term problems." I mean, that's what the Suburban Times said. Apologies if that's not entirely correct. I would agree with Councilmember Branstadter's broad sentiments. The city should not recklessly pursue additional revenues. And I'm particularly thinking about the city's encouraging encouragement of warehouse development. In the short term, warehouses do bring tax revenue, but the environmental devastation they cause can be irreversible, and is likely to last long after their decommissioning. Compare that with marijuana shops. Aside from being secure, probably more secure than gun or alcohol stores, they tend to be small and reusable. Yesterday, a nail salon, tomorrow, a church, for example. I think if Lakewood allowed marijuana shops, a few people would notice, particularly now as the legalization and decriminalization of marijuana are snowballing across the Western world. Furthermore, marijuana shops, unlike many commercial activities, cause no lasting damage to the environment. In 2018, five members of the current council were part of a close vote to prohibit retail sales of marijuana. To my knowledge, council members Farmer and Bell have not yet had a chance to publicly express themselves on the issue. I believe that it is now time for the council to vote again on the subject, and hopefully to allow legal marijuana to become part of the city's diverse economy. Thank you.
We now have someone who's signed in as Oracle. If you wish to speak, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Oracle, and I'm with the White Panther Party. And I'm going to say something that-
We asked, sir, we asked that you give your name.
Okay, my name is Jasper Wempel, and I would like to, I am a member of the White Panther Party, and I'm also a Marine Corps veteran. And what I would like to say today is that, well, I'd like to read a quote, and the quote is from a fellow Marine Corps veteran. It's from a Marine Corps hero. You know, I might be some sort of radical leftist you don't want to listen to, but this guy is not. He's a hero. He's a man that that saved the United States in a very real way from a coup. His name is Smedley Butler. And I want to read this quote because it goes to the heart of, you know, it's about, it's a veteran, a hero veteran, but it's also, it goes to the heart of who the cops and the military, who they serve, and why those people protect them. "I spent 33 years and four months in active military service, and during that period, I spent most of my time as a high-class muscle man for big business, for Wall Street and the bankers. In short, I was a racketeer, a gangster for capitalism. I helped make Mexico and especially Tampico safe for American oil interests in 1914. I helped make Haiti and Cuba a decent place for the National City Bank boys to collect revenues in. I helped in the raping of half a dozen Central American republics for the benefit of Wall Street. I helped purify Nicaragua for the International Banking House and Brown Brothers in 1902 to 1912. I brought light to the Dominican Republic for the American sugar interests in 1916. I helped make Honduras ripe for the American fruit companies in 1903. In China in 1927, I helped to see that to it, the standard oil went on its way unmolested. Looking back on it, I might have given Al Capone a few hints. The best he could do was to operate his racket in three districts. I operated in three continents. That's Smedley D. Butler, wore his racket. All power to the people."
Next up is Joseph Sellers.
Ah, there's the button. All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. City Council, thank you for granting me this opportunity. My name's Joseph. I'm a local resident, born and raised in Pierce County. And I'm here tonight because I'm concerned for our future and for the future of generations to come. Today, leaders from over 200 countries have begun the two weeks long COP26 meeting. This event will have far-reaching implications globally. It appears that not only are people really beginning to grasp the crisis we're in, but that some governments are actually starting to take this emergency seriously. This is because science is not political. It's educational. If one wants to truly understand the physical world around us, they must recognize that celebrities, shock chocks, preachers, and even elected officials are not going to be the reliable sources for that information. If you can see the world without the hindrances of political tribalism, racism, classism, narcissism, or any of the other undesirable social traits brought on by intellectual laziness, then you can see, just as we do, that we're living in the most perilous years of human history. We've run out of time for hemming and hawing, kicking the can down the road. The biosphere of the entire planet is at stake, and we are a part of that biosphere. Some scientists are even saying that it's too late, that we've already wasted too much time, and that saving ourselves from extinction is no longer possible. Sure, the odds are stacked against us. The likelihood of us pulling this off is very low. But we must do everything in our power anyways. Why? Because this, that, is what love means. Love means doing whatever the hell you can. The odds be damned. Let's say you took your child to the doctor, and they told you that your child has terminal brain cancer, and there's nothing you can do. Sure. Then would you truly do nothing? Would you abandon your child as a lost cause? Of course not. So what difference does it make that the subject is the entirety of the biosphere, not only the part of it that your child makes up? The tree preservation code amendments should not be removed from the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle. But if it is, a moratorium on tree cutting is the only pragmatic course of action, considering the global emergency we're in. Thank you all for your time. I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Now move to Katie Barlow.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Katie Barlow. I'm a resident of Tacoma, but I've spent much of my life in around the city of Lakewood. I've come to multiple city council meetings in the city of Lakewood. And it's been a pretty big shock to me to see the difference between Lakewood and the city of Tacoma in the meetings. I've been commenting on Gary Oaks and hoping to get protections from them and meaningful action from the city. And I'll be commenting later on that as well. I don't have a prepared statement for this comment, but I want to echo what a few other people said and really emphasize that, you know, veteran problems and environment problems and racism problems and police major issues, they're all connected, and we cannot address one without addressing the other. The reason that we are where we are today in the city of Lakewood is due to racism and environmental racism. And that definitely- And that definitely needs addressed more, should I say, than a lot of other things. We can't address one without addressing the other. I think the city of Lakewood does a good job in stamping down concerns about the police department, which have been there for quite some time. And this really, really needs addressed. It needs to be a top priority for the city, more than a lot of things that I've seen be a priority for the city, including expansions and getting tax breaks and getting money from the state to help support businesses that honestly don't need it. And the money wouldn't even go to the businesses, it would go back to the state. Yet people are literally being killed in the streets and nothing is being done for them about it at all. When we confront you in person, we're ignored and you run away and all of this stuff. So this is a major issue that needs addressed. It needs addressed along with everything else because you cannot fix one without fixing the other. And I, that's it, that's all I have.
Next speaker is Kyle Jollyboy.
Good evening, council. I raise tone from Lakewood to be a part of this. I care for my 88-year-old mother who has dementia, who was married to a US Marine who fought on Iwo Jima, my adopted father. And he fought for my rights to stand up today. And what I have been doing for the last six years is trying to stop the LNG plant in the port of Tacoma, which would, if it goes down, if something were to happen to it, would put a 15-mile blast zone. Most recently, I've been standing up to a racist sheriff who targeted me personally because I'm a cannabis user. I'm a medical cannabis patient. And what you guys are doing to Lakewood with cannabis is unspeakable. You should really research cannabis and the effects it has on people. It makes me get through my day. You see, I have cerebral palsy and only can use half my body. But I am standing up. Even in Lakewood, I come to your meetings and talk about the trees that you guys want so desperately to cut down, to build warehouses, when you should be doing something about the murder in Lakewood by the officers. You're murdering these trees, mayor. These trees are there for us to breathe in oxygen. You see, oxygen is what I lacked as a baby. That's what caused my cerebral palsy. What cures me is cannabis. And there's no place to get it in Lakewood. Plus, it's a very much moneymaker for your city. You see, I sit on a board of directors for a cannabis community in Tacoma as vice president. You guys want to be educated, get in touch. But you have to put a moratorium and stop cutting down these trees. You cannot take it off 2022, period, full stop. And I yield my time.
Next person has signed up is Laesentia Immortalis.
My name is Laesentia Immortalis and I am the Minister of Finance of the White Panther Party. I am here today to speak about the gross apathy toward police brutality in the city of Lakewood. Many groups have become, have been recognized today, but why are we not recognizing that we have a problem? That's the first step towards recovery. People are scared. They have said so over and over again. But because we support them, you refuse to hold them accountable. One does not need to negate the other. We hold our children accountable and that is a way for them to grow and become the best that they can be. So let's hold the people to the same level. We are talking about something so simple that we do it with our children, yet we refuse to do it with the people that we have given a gun and the power to take someone's life. That is a shame and it's something that we cannot let continue. Said Joaquin did not need to die. Leonard Thomas did not need to die. There are so many names to say, but I only have a limited time. None of them needed to die. You gave them, you gave me three minutes, but you all have much more time than me to speak. So why are we not saying their names? Say their names and then hold their murderers accountable. All power to the people.
And the last hand up is Mr. Dennis Haugen. If you can get through, Mr. Haugen, or is yours? Mr. Haugen?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm using the phone, so, but you can hear me. Okay, my name is Dennis Haugen. I'm Sioux Falls. Used to be a resident of Lakewood. One of the very disturbing, one of the very disturbing things I heard in one of the last meetings was the threat against the council. It had to do with breaking the law, going onto property that wasn't theirs. And that's disturbing. But as far as what to do with that kind of thing, you kind of have a feckless governor. I want to introduce our governor, Governor Kristi Noem of South Dakota. Now, when she got word that there would be a possible riot, she researched all of her options and she called in and planned with the National Guard, called the president, called every option that is available to her, studied the Constitution. And all of those things are out there on video, on YouTube and other channels. So I'm not gonna, she's the expert, you know? And if you want an expert to listen to, I suggest that you listen to some of her videos, the planning. She was there to support the police within 11 minutes of the time that that illegal activity started. Made it very clear that anybody can protest. But the minute you pick up a rock, the minute you break the law, you are going to be tried as a felon. And nobody's going to be trying to get you out. So, you know, study Kristi Noem. She's the expert. An expert is somebody that can articulate policy, keep it within the bounds of the Constitution, and then execute successfully. Seattle and Washington did not execute successfully. And it cost a man his life and there's all kinds of people who lost property and damage and whatnot. As for the guy who wants you to support marijuana, well, you know, it's sort of creeped up on us, there's drug tests now. And if you drive a semi or a forklift or something dangerous, you're subject to drug tests at any time. Now, if you're into the news, you might be aware, we're having a little supply chain, supply chain problem. That's because of trucks. They're having a hard time finding people because you get tested for marijuana staying in your system for 30 days. Or if you take alcohol, it's gone the next day. Anyway, thank you much. Talk to you later.
And we also have Amelia Escobedo. Your turn.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo and I live in Lakewood, Washington. I wanted to say tonight that I agree with everybody has said, Christina, Sean, the Black Panther Party, the White Panther Party. I believe that our environment and our climate is in crisis. And I believe that something needs to be done about it. And the changes that need to be done need to be done urgently, now, not later. And like everybody else said, we are here to be anti-racist, to be anti-murder, to have accountability for what happens in Lakewood. I am honestly upset with the city council because Said Joaquin's mother came to the 25th anniversary of Lakewood and nobody showed any respects to her. As a mother, it makes me sick to my stomach. It makes me want to cry. How do you not have any, any faith or any love or any humanity for the people that are suffering around you? She came on a plane, right off a plane, to come to this anniversary. I am ashamed. And I will make sure that every single one of you will get voted out. Like I said, we have to stand up for ourselves. I have dealt with racism in Lakewood. People have come up to me and said racist things. People have come up to my children in school and said racist things. People have said racist things in the military. I love my brothers and sisters in arms, but we have to stand together, united. And I'm happy to hear everybody's voice that's here tonight. And I want to say that we should legalize marijuana medicinally and recreationally here in Lakewood. Let it happen. We have a lot of veterans here that are in pain, that use marijuana medicinally. Why should we have to drive to Tacoma? Why should Tacoma make all those profits? Why not put that into Lakewood? If you let that happen here, you could build those awesome recreational centers for these kids to be in instead of the streets. You could be causing that change. I want you to hear my love and my hope that I have for Lakewood. Todos Unidos Podemos, justice for Said. Fire Don Anderson, Trump. Thank you.
That's all the people who have signed up. If there's anyone else online who wishes to speak that doesn't preclude you, raise your hand and you will be recognized. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who wishes to participate in public comment? Seeing no further hands raised, I declare public comment closed. We now, and I don't see anyone from the school district that I recognize here to give the report. So we'll move to
Consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October 40, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of October 11th, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of October 13th, 2021. D, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October 18th, 2021. E, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $1,510,715.54 for the period of September 16th, 2021 through October 25th, 2021. F, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,518,806.79 for the period of September 16th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021. G, motion number 2021-71, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Governmental Affairs in the amount of $60,120 for state government relation services. H, motion number 2021-72, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Johnson Group in the amount of $56,700 for federal governmental relation services. I, motion number 2021-73, authorizing the adoption of the 2022 federal state and county legislative priorities. J, motion number 2021-74, authorizing the execution of agreements to acquire 10.47 acres of land in the Woodsland Park. K, motion number 2021-75, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Global IT Resources in the amount of $75,000 to update the rental housing safety program software. L, motion number 2021-76, authorizing the execution of a contract with Brown and Padwell in the amount of $271,377 for engineering alternatives evaluation for Provo Creek. M, motion number 2021-77, reappointing Darrell Owens and Philip Rashke to serve on the Lakewood Parks Commission for October 16th, 2024. N, motion number 2021-78, appointing Megan Dempsey to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board through May 21st, 2024. O, motion number 2021-79, appointing Brian Parsons to serve on the Planning Commission for December 15th, 2023. P, resolution number 2021-12, approving and authorizing the amendment to the city council rules of procedure. Q, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of July 27th, 2021. And two, Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 6th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any member of the council wishes to have removed? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Bocky, signed by Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Will the long favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
O, nay, motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2021-2022 mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance. And I don't have the script. Who's up on this?
Mayor, we have Deputy City Manager Kraus.
Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item was presented to the city council at the October 11th study session. Since then, there were two changes. First one is Fund 195 Public Safety Grant Fund. I've updated the emergency performance grant amount from $14,927 to $50,805. The second change is the removal of the Fund 196 American Rescue Plan Act budget adjustments. These budget adjustments are being considered separate from the mid-biennium budget adjustment. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? So we'll now move to public testimony on the public hearing as part of the public hearing for the mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance for 2021-2022. The rules for this are very similar to public comment, except your comments must be limited to the subject of the mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance. Again, you can participate by calling in at 1-253-215-87282 and entering the meeting ID 868-72632373, as you see on the screen. We're signing into Zoom at zoom.us/join and entering the meeting ID 868-72632373. Please raise your hand to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken, the raise hand function will work, but you will be muted for the remainder of the public hearing. And going through the list of attendees. I don't see any hands up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing on the 2021-22 mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance? Third and last call, is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing on the 2021-2022 mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance? at the public hearing on the 2021-2022 mid-biennium budget adjustment ordinance? Seeing none, I declare that public hearing closed. We now move to the public hearing on the 2022 property tax levy ordinance. Ms. Kraus.
This item was also presented to the city council at the October 11th study session. Per state law, the city is authorized to increase its property tax annually up to the lesser of implicit price deflator or 1%. The implicit price deflator is 3.86%, which means the city can take the full 1% levy increase. The 1% levy increase is commensurate with the city's budget as well as past city council action. The preliminary levy rate, assuming the 1% increase, is 81 cents per 1,000 assessed value. The city's portion of taxes for the average homeowner is $359.69 with the 1% levy increase, which is $3.50 more than the no increase scenario. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Now, at the risk of sounding repetitive, we have the same rules that we had on the last public hearing. If you wish to testify on the at the public hearing on the 2022 property tax levy, please raise your virtual hand if you are signed in at Zoom, which is at zoom.us/join, entering the meeting ID 868-72632373. You can call in by telephone at 1-253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID 868-72632373, as it appears on your screen. You'll have three minutes to speak. Once your three minutes is up, the raise hand function will continue to be available, but you will be muted. Remember that the subject is matter of your comments must be limited to the 2022 property tax levy ordinance. Well, the screen shared, I can't see if any of the attendees have raised their hand. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak at this public hearing. Seeing none, again, call for raise of hands if anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing on the 2022 property tax levy ordinance. Last call for anyone who wishes to testify regarding the 2022 property tax levy ordinance. Seeing yes. Mr. Brandt.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. In the email that I received from the city clerk regarding public testimony, there was one piece of testimony that seemed to be related to this public hearing. And are we going to make that a matter of record? Or was that being considered just as a public comment and not a matter of record for this, this hearing?
The clerk will enter it as part of the record. The clerk will enter it as part of the record. As we regularly do with written comments on public hearing items. Seeing no other, no one, raise their hand to testify and declare the public hearing on the 2022 property tax levy ordinance closed. Now move to the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Act Program Budget Ordinance.
So this item was presented to the city council at the October 25th study session. It was originally included as part of the mid-biennium budget adjustment and is being presented separately to account for only the ARPA programs the city council approved via ordinance number 759. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So we now invite public testimony on the American Rescue Plan Act Program Budget Ordinance. If you are interested in testifying, please raise your virtual hand if you're online via Zoom at zoom.us/join. Meeting ID number, or number 868-72632373, or participating by telephone at 1-253-215-8782 and entering the meeting ID number on the screen, which is 868-72632373. Like the public hearings before, please limit your comments to the subject matter of the public hearing, which is the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Program Budget Ordinance. You'll have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer on the screen, and when your three minutes is up, you will be muted, though your raise hand function will remain active. Please switch me to the participants. I have a couple of people who signed in. The first one is Dennis Haugen.
Hear me?
Yes. You're breaking up. You're, you're breaking up and it's
There, did I get it now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, this is, let's, let's, let's look at this from the standpoint of the poor. The inflation, which now is set at 0.059%, which is well known, comes when the government prints money because it offers things it can't afford. And that printed money is, is, is put out there at a faster rate than the growth of the economy. So a poor person with $20,000 income has already paid a tax in higher prices of $1,080. If you had $30,000 income somewhere, you've paid a price of $1,770 already. And I've been through this before. I remember back in 78, 79, we had 12% inflation. Unless the federal government gets some sense, we're going back, right back to those days. It hurts the poor the most. They have, they can't, they can't adjust fast enough as inflation keeps increasing and increasing. And it's all, it's all right down to Biden's folly. He wanted to pay everybody.
Mr. Haugen, would you please address the budget ordinance?
Oh, okay. Well, that's the rescue plan, right?
Yes.
So what I'm trying to address is who's paying for the rescue plan? It costs somebody money. It comes from somewhere. And I'm trying to say that comes from, that comes from inflation due to the fact that the government didn't have the money to pay it. You know, and, and so it really is a situation that you're caught in. It's not your fault, but it's, it's an exercise that's sort of a folly exercise because it's not going to rescue the people it's supposed to rescue. Which doesn't mean you're doing a bad job. It all goes back to the federal government. Somebody pays for this, and I think it's well established that it's being paid for by inflation. You know, that's a hidden tax, and I think there's many economists will agree with me there. Anyway, to that point, that's all I have to say. We put that thought out there on the table.
All right, next is Carly Roberts. Regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Program Budget Ordinance.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Carly Roberts. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer of Tacoma Probono Community Lawyers. We have our office here in Tacoma, but we serve hundreds of clients in the Lakewood area. I'm speaking tonight in support of the ARPA funding for our Tacoma Pierce County Housing Justice Project. We appreciate you taking the time to consider our proposal. And I know there's a few of us here tonight to talk about this in support of our, what we're suggesting here. We'd just like to note that it takes about $80,000 to $100,000 per homeless person to care for them annually. That's acute care often, such as emergency room visits and care along those lines. With this funding that the council is considering to support a number of staff people in our office, we can prevent hundreds of residents of Lakewood from being evicted and save the city, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The clients and the citizens that we are working to prevent from being evicted are the most vulnerable citizens in Lakewood. They are children, they are families, they are elderly residents of the city, and they are communities of color, historically underserved populations that are really at the highest risk of losing their homes. So thank you for your consideration. We appreciate you considering our funding proposal. Thank you.
All right, next up is Mark Morizol.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Mark Morizol. I'm the managing attorney for the Tacoma Pierce County Housing Justice Project. And I as well am speaking in support of using ARPA funds for the housing justice project to help low-income tenants who are facing eviction and other housing-related issues. Coming out of the pandemic, the Washington State Legislature took some historic action to address the vast amount of non-payment that's going on in our communities right now. Included in that was Senate Bill 5160 that allowed for landlords, required landlords to offer repayment plans to tenants in order to get caught up on rent arrears. It also created a mediation program that allows tenants and landlords to come together, seek rental assistance, so both of them could come out of the situation whole. The final thing that Senate Bill 5160 did was it provided a historic right to counsel, meaning low-income tenants have the right to legal representation when they're facing eviction proceedings. However, that has some limitations on it, as in the right to counsel only kicks in for tenants when an eviction is filed against them, not before, unless they're trying to navigate the situation. We're asking for ARPA funding to help alleviate that situation. The Urban Displacement Project run by UC Berkeley indicates that the city of Lakewood right now has 4,600 households that are at danger of facing eviction for non-payment of rent right now. It's 46,000 households, not individual tenants. We want to work with those individuals prior to the eviction being filed through the mediation process so that they have legal representation and are able to save their housing. We also want to work with these tenants to help them overcome barriers to getting new housing when they do have evictions, whether that's legal financial obligations, criminal record sealing, or removing evictions off of prior evictions off of individuals' records. Thank you, counsel.
That's all the people I see signed up to speak to the American Rescue Plan Program Budget Ordinance. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Program Budget Ordinance? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We'll now move to the public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And do we have Ms. Spear for this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tiffany Spear with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'll share my screen for a very quick review. The Planning Commission forwarded to you on October 6th the Resolution 2021-04 that recommended seven proposed amendments for inclusion in the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket list. The council held a study session on October 25th, and this evening there is a public hearing being held. The seven amendments are in varying degrees of substantive change. The one that I'll spend a little bit more time on is 2022-01. This is related to tree preservation, and you've heard some of the comments in public hearing this evening about this item. This was originally included as a potential docket item for the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Cycle. It's actually recommended at this point to pull this out of the Comprehensive Plan docket and address it separately because of the amount of public outreach that's needed and the amount of time that it will likely take to move through that process and draft a predicted new code. So it is included tonight for the public hearing, but it is being recommended that the council, when it takes action, would remove this from the docket list. The second relates to updating the Telecom's 2011 Neighborhood Plan and the related item, the Telecom Center of Local Importance, which has been in place at least since 2014. You'll see down here in this map, the Center of Local Importance or COLI overlaps the Telecom neighborhood. And related to this item is an ask or request that was submitted by Habitat for Humanity to rezone a parcel in blue, which is adjacent to several parcels that were rezoned in the 2020 process. I'm sorry, 2021 process. And because this was a single parcel being requested, that would qualify on its own as a site-specific rezone, which is a separate legislative process or code process. And so what has been done through Planning Commission recommendation to the council is that this request was subsumed into this application regarding the Telecom Neighborhood Plan and the COLI. So the single parcel and its zoning will be considered as part of the larger amendment 2022-02. The remainder of the amendments 03 through 07 are here on this page. So updating housing chapter language within the Comprehensive Plan and related amendments to Title 18A. 04 relates to the consideration of whether adult family homes should be authorized within the Air Corridor 1 and 2 zones. 05 is related to just a technical update of the city's comprehensive plan to reflect the adoption of Vision 2050. So just making sure there's reference to 2050 versus 2040, for instance. 06 is updating various maps within the Comprehensive Plan. And 07 is related to a city council request to review parking requirements both in 18A80, which is citywide, and 18C600, which is specific to the Lakewood Station subarea. So these are referring to Ordinance 726, which was adopted in December of 2019, and Ordinance 751, which was adopted in May of this year. So with that, the processes this evening would be the public hearing. In two weeks, the council is currently scheduled to take action on the resolution establishing the docket. And then winter, spring, and summer of next year will be the substantive review at the Planning Commission and then at the city council for this docket list. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Whaling.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Spear, for your fine work on this. My question to you, based on the comment we have heard today and previously, is the concern that taking 2022-01 off the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket, does that lessen or expand the timeframe within which the council, through staff support, would review the tree preservation ordinance? In other words, do we delay consideration and proper review of the tree preservation ordinance by moving this from the 2022 Comp Plan Amendment process?
What this is actually doing, and I believe Mr. Buer is going to be discussing this as well with you this evening, but a quick answer is the intent is to pull it out of this package because the package has its own life cycle. And by the time this package comes back to council, that is not going to allow for the needed public involvement and review of any tree preservation discussions to happen. So the idea here is we are going to be doing these concurrently for as long as the 22 Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle lasts. But likely, the tree preservation consideration will take longer, but that's on purpose, just to try to make sure it's, it's fully vetted with the public.
Right. And so effectively, by taking it out of the 2022 Comp Plan Amendment process, it gives it extra focus, if you will, and attention. Isn't that right?
Correct. It will be on its own legs and take as much time as it needs to take and will allow the Planning Commission, the council, and then the general public to take as much time as they need here. Yes.
Right. So I just wanted to make that clear because I think there was some misimpression that by removing it from the Comprehensive Plan amendments, it would receive less retention, and that's not the case.
It's not the case, and the Planning Commission is already scheduled before the end of this year to start talking about the package.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Branshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, again, with respect to the 2021-01 or 2022-01. And I understand the value of getting more robust and more focused public involvement if it is handled separately rather than mixed in with a busy agenda of the Planning Commission to do that. However, the element of 2022-01 that speaks to rezoning a specific parcel of land in the vicinity of St. Clair Hospital from public institutional to open space and regulation, that does not seem to be specifically related or need to be have its own separate process. And if we are we going to be able to withdraw the consideration and the redrafting of the policies and tree preservation ordinance while remaining keeping on the docket that particular rezone?
Mr. Branshaw, yes, you could. The council could separate the two items from 2022-01. The thought process by staff in saying that we would pull the entire thing out is it's assumed by the time the tree preservation code is complete, there will be additional Comprehensive Plan Amendments related to it that will need to happen with whether it's the 2023 cycle or whenever. So the thought was we would do this rezone at the same time, but certainly the council could keep that as part of the 2022 docket.
I think that particular action, which is targeted at a specific location that has Gary Oaks, I guess we will take that up on the fifteenth as to how we amend the docket and whether we leave that rezone part in or not. Okay, thank you.
All right, then we'll see another question from council. We'll loop the public hearing.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think Patty Bell, Councilmember Bell.
Sorry. Yeah, I think most of my questions were answered by Councilmember Whalen and Branshaw what they asked. I just was looking for the clarification by pulling this out. It would get the extra attention that it needs, and also on top of that, the process would be able to start sooner, correct?
Correct. It is intended to be at the Planning Commission before the end of this year, whereas other parts of the Comprehensive Plan docket won't be until next year.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Anything else from council? Please use your hand raise function. Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing on their public testimony on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. Like the three prior public hearings, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can sign in via Zoom at zoom.us/join and entering the meeting ID 868-7263-2373 or calling on the telephone at 253-215-8782 and entering that same meeting ID 868-7263-2373. When called upon, you will be unmuted. You will have three minutes to speak. The subject is limited to the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. Please identify yourself by date and city of residence. After you have spoken, you will be muted again, and though the hand raise function will work, you'll be muted for the remainder of the meeting. First person who signed up to testify is Katie Barlow.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Katie Barlow. I spoke earlier, so I'm talking about the Gary Oaks here. So I am asking that you quickly enact protections because these trees are being cut down right now. So we're losing a defining feature of Lakewood as we speak. These trees are more than that, though. They're not just lawn ornaments that are pretty. These trees provide shade and have been proven to save cities and people in the cities money in air conditioning. They also provide nature that is close to people's homes and easily accessible, which has proven to increase happiness, a sense of community, and even decrease crime rates as well. They're part of the unique and endangered environment that Lakewood hosts, and they provide essential habitat for many animals of the area. And they're also the best and cheapest carbon sequestering technology that we have. And when the Executive Secretary of the UN Climate Change says that if we overshoot our temperature goals, it will lead to worldwide endless suffering, we all need to do everything in our power to help. You all are in a position of power. Thank you for that. If you feel that you do not have the power to make a difference, I suggest you resign and we can elect someone who can. I hope that after how involved and vocal community members have been over this issue and the clear science and data of the reality of climate change, the City Council sees that Gary Oaks need to be a top priority. I understand that tree protection amendments need time to be fully addressed and the issue not be rushed. So I ask that you immediately enact a moratorium that prevents any Gary Oaks from being cut down while you set up and take action to create an encompassing long-term plan. Let's see. We need more than words in these plans. We need concrete actions and clear and defined consequences if those actions and goals are not completed on time. Because climate change is not going away, and neither are we. And Mayor, I would appreciate if you could stop sighing during my public comment. I resign the rest of my time. Thank you.
I don't know who was signing, but you can be polite next time. Let's see. With screen share, it's hard to see here. Kyle Jollyboy is the next person to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle Jollyboy. I'm a current resident of Tacoma, Washington. I grew up out in Lakewood. And Mayor, we elected you. The people did. So snide comments after you get rid of someone is not welcome. But I'm here for the trees because we are in a climate emergency. And we've been standing up for climate change in Pierce County for well over seven years now, starting with the methanol and the LNG now. But what you guys are doing to Lakewood is appalling. While I waited for my turn to speak, I looked up Lakewood because I lived, I moved out there when I was 12 years old. My mother is still there. And it says Lakewood was once called the Prairie in the beginning in the expanses, expanse of land about 20 miles square with dotted with small lakes and occasional strands of Gary Oak trees. This very same trees that you guys are wanting to cut down. So what I'm asking you guys right now to do a moratorium on cutting down any more trees. The trees have got to stop being cut down, period, full stop. And you can put that $60,000 that you're going to put into that consultant firm, put it in the bank, or better yet, a credit union, and make that money grow until this is over. Until you guys can decide what you are going to do, another tree should not be cut down because of your ignorance. Because we only have one planet, and we can't keep sending billionaires up to space. We elected you guys to protect us, to protect the land, to do better than the previous people. Your record's not looking good. You guys can be heroes here and step up and say we are not going to cut down any more trees in Lakewood until we have a plan. If that may take two years, so be it, but not another tree. Think about your grandchildren and your great grandchildren and your families. And instead of building, you know, you're building big warehouses, but you will not put anything up for Chief Leshy. That's embarrassing. He was killed in Lakewood. And I yield my time.
Next up is Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello again. So my name is Christina Minetti, and I live in Lakewood. Thank you very much, council members, for having incorporated the tree preservation code amendments into the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments docket. We were very glad to see that you decided to take this important step. Having found out that there is, there has been a recommendation to remove the tree preservation code amendments from the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments docket, I became very concerned that Lakewood is not treating the problem of tree and environmental protection in general with sufficient urgency. I realize that it's a good idea, but I'm concerned about the urgency. If removing the tree preservation code amendments from the docket means that almost immediate action in terms of changing the regulations regarding 17,000 square feet and industrial exemptions, for example, will not be possible. I would like to urge the council to reconsider and keep the tree amendments on the docket. We cannot have a situation in which the two consultancies conduct their work counting trees, measuring tree canopy, and organizing fun activities with local residents, for example, to use their term. While at the same time elsewhere in Lakewood, more centuries-old oaks and other large trees continue to be cut down, as has been the case up to now. There is an emergency, not only an oak and tree emergency in Lakewood, but a global climate crisis, and we all need to start acting appropriately. Please follow carefully the climate summit in Glasgow these days. I would recommend that the mayor declare a climate crisis in Lakewood, as other places have done, as soon as possible, and that the council start taking whatever measures possible to mitigate global warming in Lakewood. For example, a simple step in this direction would be to ban drive-throughs, except for perhaps for electric vehicles. Similarly, the city must treat the Gary Oaks and other trees as critically important elements in our local fight to limit global warming to less than 1.5 degrees Celsius. We all know the facts about trees, and the city must stop regarding trees simply as a question of private property. Trees are not just private property, but something whose destruction adversely affects all of us. In conclusion, please make the tree code amendments a priority in terms of immediate measures, which would include a moratorium that would halt tree felling until the question of the new regulations is sorted out. I have heard from the city that a moratorium is unfeasible, but there is an emergency, and emergencies often require steps that are out of the norm. This is one of those times. The remaining mature Gary Oaks deserve to live until the new regulations can protect them. A moratorium would prevent unscrupulous property owners from preemptively cutting down whatever they can before the new regulations take effect. Thank you for your serious consideration of these issues and for your continued efforts to protect Lakewood's trees and environment as a whole. Like I said before, I really, really appreciate it, and all of us do. Thank you.
The next person signed up to testify is Joseph Sellers.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So again, thank you all for granting me this opportunity. My name is Joseph. So I said earlier that, along with many others, that we're in an emergency. This is not an opinion. This is a scientifically verifiable reality. Across the globe, in order to meet this crisis and survive, there are many things we need that need to be done. The use of fossil fuels has to end. Massive investments must be made in natural abundant sources of energy, the ones that are all around us. Ecocide must be recognized as the humanitarian crime that it is. Our entire socioeconomic model is going to have to shift in order to place human life, finally, above profit. So many big, big things have to be done. All we're asking you to do is to stop cutting down Washington's only native oak trees. The tree preservation code amendments should not be removed from the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle, but if they must, I must urge you to place a moratorium on tree cutting. And, you know, since I have a couple extra moments, I really need to to comment on this because I'm very disappointed in you, Mayor. I heard both times, in both instances, when Katie was speaking, as she finished, you sighed as though her testimony had affected you in some negative way. That is really been, it's, sir, I'm reclaiming my time. Can I reclaim my time, sir? I don't believe that is really of the caliber that's required of someone in your position. I know you weren't elected, but that doesn't mean you can just...
Okay. Madam clerk, please mute the commentator.
Have a nice night.
The next person to speak is Otto Equitas.
All right. I'm Otto Equitas. I'm the chairman of the White Panther Party. Nice to see you guys again. So there was talk of a moratorium. And then it was announced that that was an unfeasible plan. And then the amendment was put onto the 2022 bracket. And everybody celebrated a little bit. It looked like, you know, hey, we're making some headway. And now it's being talked about being removed because it's unfeasible to discuss in such a short amount of time. We need more information. And that's, that it confuses me. And I'm not easily confused. It's unfeasible to prevent the trees from being cut down, and it's unfeasible to not discuss the trees. It sounds like what you're saying is the trees are unfeasible. The trees in lieu of a warehouse that, to my knowledge at least, hasn't been purchased, hasn't been set up for any particular business. That seems pretty unfeasible to me that we're going to cut down these trees that go to support these different things that we've been talking about all night, the children, the veterans, the people. Trees are important to the children because, you know, they're going to live here, even after we're all gone. They're important to the veterans. It gives them a sense of peace. I know a couple different recovery programs that bring people out to nature to let them thrive and see the beauty in the world because unfortunately that's robbed from them. So I don't see how the trees are unfeasible. I don't see a discussion about knocking down any of the houses or the trees or all the beautiful things in the neighborhoods that you live in. It's in the neighborhoods that we live in. It's in the neighborhoods that the people inhabit. It's unfeasible to me that this is being so withdrawn from the council. And it's unfeasible that this should be allowed to happen. But that word gets thrown around a lot, so who knows? I would just say, you know, do one or the other. Either put it on the 22 docket or put a moratorium in place. Power to the people.
Next up is Tichimer Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Tichimer Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. We live near a house that had 13 Gary Oaks on its land. And in one day in 2016, when I was around 11 years old, the owner cut them all down. In fact, it took an entire three or so days to log them. My mom tried to stop them because one would assume that doing such a thing would be illegal. She called the police. She then found out that the owner was allowed to cut them down because his lot was less than 17,000 square feet, which doesn't make any sense at all. No matter what your lot size is, that doesn't make a difference how long these oaks take to grow and how important they are to our environment and to our city. We went to a city council meeting soon after. My parents made public comments about what had happened and asked if the tree codes could be changed. Also in 2016, it was Lakewood's 20th anniversary. Also in 2016, it was Lakewood's twentieth anniversary. I entered into a competition at the time that the city was having, in which I wrote a letter about what I wanted Lakewood to be like in the future. I said that I wanted the city to respect nature. The city appeared to like my letter, and I even, I even got third place in the competition. At the June 20th, 2016 council meeting, my bronze medal was recognized by Deputy Mayor Wayland and Councilmember Branstadter. That was five and a half years ago. Nothing has changed. My letter was ignored. Oak trees are still being destroyed to make way for warehouses, and still you can do what you like with your land if it is less than seventeen thousand square feet. But now I'm supposed to be happy because there's talk about the tree codes being changed in 2023, perhaps? Will anything really change, or is it just talk? We are in a climate emergency. We need our trees, particularly the Gary Oaks, which can withstand drought and high temperatures far more than the first. Every year, every month, every week, every day, even even every day that the changes to the tree codes are put off or delayed, more trees are irreversibly destroyed. The last five years make me afraid of delays, and I ask myself how long the Gary Oaks will continue to be cut down while the city hall is procrastinating. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Dunlop.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I don't think I'm going to speak for very long, but I just want to say that there seems to be this idea of moral relativism, that, you know, we don't really, you know, there's not a great certainty that cutting down Gary Oaks is wrong, that you need to discuss it, that you need to have extra time to work out what needs to be done. There is no doubt that cutting down any Gary Oak in Lakewood, unless it is in dire danger of falling down and killing someone, is, is unacceptable. And I think, I think that the council needs to show some leadership here. I mean, you know, Gary Oaks, they take a huge amount of time to grow. They can, you know, they, they're not actually doing anything in terms of carbon sequestration for their first hundred years, yet they've been cut down for the most trivial reasons. I mean, I was, you know, in, I heard, I think in Parkland, that, you know, some oak tree, hundred years, hundreds of years old, was cut down to make way for a parking space. And so if you have a moratorium, and remembering that seventeen thousand square feet, you can do what you like. And when I look around, I see those seven, you know, all those plots, seven, less than seventeen thousand square feet with oaks on them, you know, whenever, whenever the owner feels like it, they can cut it down. Even if people are breaking the law, it would seem that, or breaking code, it seems that they can get retro, retroactive planning permission, and the fines, I think of, you know, I think are fairly, are fairly trivial. So until we've got one more year, if you have a moratorium, sorry, if you don't have a moratorium, you've got one more year of oaks being, being vulnerable, you know, being incredibly vulnerable. It's almost like you've got an atrocity in progress, and the council is doing nothing. And, you know, that's what I mean by moral relativism. It's as if you're not sure whether it's a bad thing to cut down Gary Oaks or not. We need to have a, we need to discuss it and whatever. Well, it is a bad thing, and you'd need to say, this is wrong. You know, oaks represent, an oak, an oak represents life. You know, a warehouse potentially represents death, and you have to kind of support life. And you've got, you know, another year of oaks being vulnerable. I think that's unacceptable. And I think you do have to have an immediate, an immediate moratorium and show some leadership and put it in place. Thank you.
Next person is signed up is Chris B.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Chris B. I am the Minister of Wellness for the White Panther Party, and I'm here to echo the sentiments that I have been listening come into these halls for months now. The people speaking up, not always the same voices, not always the same names, but always thoughtful commentary, science-backed narrative, economic reasons, environmental reasons, heart reasons on why the council should put a moratorium on cutting down the Gary Oaks, on why the council should act in being the next great place to be, not because you prioritize profits in the traditional sense, but by supporting the life that will ultimately bring profits to the city. I also wanted to mention that it does go hand in hand with the marijuana dispensaries and allowing the people to make choices for themselves. These are two very critical issues that I wanted to retouch on this evening. Like I said, I've been coming for months. I have listened to people speak to you over and over. I have listened to them explain who is at stake, who is being affected, who is not being considered, and whose voice is not coming to the table. And now I see we're putting it off until 2022, but that you're not ending the opportunity for people to cut down, like, not putting a moratorium on cutting down the Gary Oaks, and I think that is gross neglect at this point. They're a protected species, and they're tied into the very precious habitat that we hold. One, one too many cut down, and the whole thing collapses around you. And you think it's been hot before, and you think that your people have been struggling before, and you think that we were angry before. My friends, make some rational choices and help us fight for the lives that depend on you. I yield the rest of my time.
Next person signed up is Jenna Lee.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, so this is Jenna Lee. I'm a resident of Seattle. I've been at Lakewood for a number of years, just back and forth. I used to live in University Place. And I'd like to similarly echo everyone else's comments about the need for a moratorium for these Gary Oak trees. Again, as other speakers have said, these trees are absolutely critical if Lakewood is to make the positive step to fight climate change and have a bigger step at creating a brighter future for young people. I just turned twenty today. It's my birthday, actually. And I'd love to, in twenty years, be able to go back to Lakewood still and see these lovely trees and know that they're going to be still there for future generations. These trees are so valuable for economic reasons, to land property values go up if there's greenery around, health issues, and just for community morale. It's a lovely thing to have something like a park with all these old trees that carry such history, knowing that they were at the, they're at the birth of, the birth of America even. So tremendously important trees to keep around. I think at all costs, really, they should be protected. They should be absolutely prioritized, regardless of if they're allowed to be in the agenda for efficiency purposes, or if it's possible to fit them in, a moratorium is really critical, and the council should do everything in its power to be able to, to protect them effectively. So I said this one of the last times. I'm, I'm a law student. I'm a first year at U of Law. This is my sixth week. I will, I, I know you guys have a lot going on, and so do I. I'm running on little sleep. I'd imagine that's similar for all of you. But really, all of us have been showing up consistently for weeks on end, sorry about that, for weeks on end to really advocate for this stuff. So I just, we would all tremendously appreciate if you took our comments to heart and just realize how very deeply we care about the well-being for our communities to take time out of our lives and all of the energy that's needed to do this research and come up with all of these statements, that we're here every time. So thank you for your time and good night.
We now go to Eric Sibell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll keep my comments brief. I know that we're, the hour is getting quite late. I, I want to reiterate that there is tremendous desire among members of the community for a moratorium on the trees. In my correspondence, in my activist meetings, and in my conversations with members of the community, I hear this all the time. And I was, I don't understand or know the factors that you calculate to, to, to say that it's feasible or not. But I would just ask you, please, to be conservative in this matter, in the manner of conservation and conserving what we have. It's conservative to wait. Having a moratorium is actually a conservative thing to do. And I would ask you, please, to, to consider this. Yes, you can hear, there's tremendous desire among the public for this. Thanks again for your time and for allowing us to participate in this forum. I yield my time.
That's all the people who have raised their hand to testify on the 2022 comprehensive planned amendment docket. Ms. Escobedo has raised her hand. You're up.
Hello, this is Amelia Escobedo. I live in Lakewood. I'm gonna make this short because I have babies asleep. I want to say, please make the trees a priority, and thank you.
Thank you, and I see no further hands up. Is anyone else wish to testify on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendment docket? Going third time, does anyone else wish to testify on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendment docket? Joseph Sellers. Hand was up, was it a remaining hand up? I've lost track.
Mayor Anderson, Mr. Sellers has already provided testimony this evening.
Okay, so his hand was still up. So seeing no others, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business coming for the council? There is none, Mayor. Then we'll move to new businesses. Is there any new business coming for the council? Move to motion number 2021-80. Madam Clerk?
Motion number 2021-80 authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Clover Park School District in the amount of $68,450 for the 2021 Warriors of Change Program.
Thank you. If we have Ms. Spear for this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll share my screen again for a brief discussion of this. There are actually four motions this evening, all related to the same general topic, which is action on specific contracts or services for agreement under ARPA based on ordinance 759, which the council adopted in September. This first one, 2021-80, relates to the 2021 Warriors of Change Program, which was conducted in concert between the Clover Park School District and communities and schools Lakewood. This was a contract originally identified as being for a value of up to $68,450. We did receive the invoicing from communities and schools this last Friday, and it was actually almost half of that. So the amount will be less than what was authorized by the council in its ordinance. The description of what this program was is included as an attachment to the motion in your packet this evening. And in addition, on December 6th, the council will be receiving an update from communities and schools about the program. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? I as well take questions on all four of these at once, and then we'll go through them one by one as motions. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, the, the cost invoiced was less than what was anticipated when we approved some ARPA funding for this program. And did, the invoice that we received, is it, was it a final invoice based on the performance of the contract?
That is what I understand, yes.
Okay. And did it include any financial support from the city or the ongoing activities of that program where there were some student groups pursuing a number of community initiatives that included transportation and food? Or would that require a new, a new contract if we wanted to, did we get her to say a recommendation from the youth council to provide some resources so that the projects developed during this program could move forward in 2022?
The ordinance 759 by council authorized the 2021 Warriors of Change Program. And the way the contract was actually signed previously, which is also attached to this evening's packet, I don't believe explains or includes any discussion of what would happen after the six weeks of the program itself. So should the council want to additionally fund Warriors of Change, either the follow-up to the 21 program or for future years, there would need to be a separate contract?
So the, the contract assumed that the program ended after six weeks, even though what we've heard is that it's still ongoing?
That's correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spear.
Is there a motion on motion number 2021-80?
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt motion number 2021-80. Is there any further discussion? Seeing not a call for the question, will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose nae. Motion carries. We now move to motion number 2021-81. Madam Clerk?
Motion number 2021-81 authorizing the execution of an agreement with Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $242,000 to fund off-site utility and street improvements for the Boat Street Project.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, as, as the clerk just stated, that is what 2021-81 refers to, relates to 2021, there is a request for an oral amendment because this is a project that relates to infrastructure construction, and it is related to off-street improvements for the Boat Street Project that Habitat for Humanity is in the process of developing within Tillicum to remove in section four of the contract, the statement or the phrase or subcontracted. And this is in order to allow for Habitat to use subcontractors in the construction work as it moves forward. So other than that, the scope of the work is discussed for this motion 2021-81 in exhibit three of the Agreement for Services.
All right. Did enter can a motion?
I'm moved.
And, and just for clarification, Mr. Wayland, is your motion on the original motion or the motion as, including the suggested amendment?
Correct, with the suggested amendment. Move adoption.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt motion 2021-81 as, with the suggested, including the suggested amendment. Mr. Wayland?
Just, just a point with regard to further discussion. I want to say again, thank you to Tiffany for, for bringing this forward and to staff. This is a tremendous use, in my humble opinion, of the ARPA monies. It invests in infrastructure, needed infrastructure, in an area that provides equity for folks and opportunities for homeownership that we desperately have advocated for as a matter of council. and opportunities for homeownership that we desperately have advocated for as a matter of council policy. Habitat is a fantastic partner, and this will add to the repertoire of homes and partnership that we have had with Habitat over the last decade, and I'm a big fan, so I move adoption.
Any other discussion? Oh, we just chime in, I, I remember pretty vividly sitting down with Ms. Fife and Gomer Rossman and saying, is there any way we can partner out there with some federal money we had? And they found a way to pursue it and have taken that ball and run with it. So it's great to see partnerships when they work and they've done a lot for the community by leveraging the federal dollars that we were able to share. Any other discussion? Will all favor of motion number 2021-81 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. We now move to motion number 2021-82, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2021-82 authorizing the execution of an agreement with Pierce County in the amount of $500,000 for the Business Accelerator Program.
Ms. Spear.
Thank you. Sorry, I muted myself, apologies. So 82, motion 82, again would be $500,000 to support the Pierce County Business Accelerator Program. This was described in study session and in the public hearing process and action taken for ordinance 759. The scope of work is an exhibit C of the motion agreement for services. Essentially, this is intended as the start of a multi-year effort for, with APR funding, ARPA funding, for underserved communities to help foster innovation and create wealth-building opportunities. The program will provide direct access to business resources such as relevant training, coaching, technical assistance, and networking, with a particular focus on BIPOC businesses. And the $500,000 that City of Lakewood is contributing or would contribute with this motion toward the program would be focused on instructors and students or participants and locations within, or very close to the City of Lakewood. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt motion number 2021-82. Is there any further discussion? I, I would note that I've had discussions with the Economic Development Department of Pierce County, who's facilitating this program, and I'm impressed with the way they're selecting their mentors in this effort and making real effort at outreach and focus, I think is really a good one for Lakewood, where there are a lot of mom-and-pop businesses that are undercapitalized and with limited business skills that are coming through the pandemic and just teetering on the verge of bankruptcy in some cases. And this gives some needed coaching and boost to those businesses, keeping people employed and providing for their families. So I'm glad to see that Lakewood's participating. Any other, Mr. Wayland?
And this may be a question for Tiffany. Will we receive some sort of feedback, you know, in a periodic way that reflects how well our investments have, have, have gone and have been invested with businesses in Lakewood?
Yes, both as just a way to keep you up to speed as a council with the money that you've authorized be used this way, but also ARPA requires that sort of tracking, so we will be presenting that to you at least on a quarterly basis.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? A call for the question, motion number 2021-82. Will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. We now move motion number 2021-83, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2021-83 authorizing the execution of an agreement with West Pierce Fire and Rescue in the amount of $230,000 for operations center equipment improvements, acquiring ham radios and providing emergency messaging in multiple languages.
Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once more, quick screen share. The motion here is referring specifically to improvements to the West Pierce Fire and Record, excuse me, rescues, Department Operations Center technology, acquiring ham radios, and both of those are to improve communication ability in some sort of natural disaster that would take down more recent types of technology, communications, cell phones, or what have you. And then also allowing that West Pierce Fire and Rescue be able to translate emergency messaging into multiple languages, particularly those that are most commonly spoken other than English in the City of Lakewood. So again, this is explained in more details in exhibit three of the attached contract to motion 2021-83.
Any questions from Ms. Spear? Entertain a motion on number 2021-83?
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt motion number 2021-83. Is there any further discussion? All in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? The motion carries. We now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. First up this evening, I'd like to call upon our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, Dave Buhr, to provide the city council an update on a proposed plan and process, including a public participation plan as it relates to updating the city's tree preservation code. These councils aware this was a directive that the council asked us to address earlier this year. And so this evening, Mr. Buhr is going to do a walkthrough, talk-through on how this policy issue can be facilitated through the council, the planning commission, and of course, the community as a whole. So with that, Mr. Buhr.
Good evening. I prepared a slide presentation. Can you see it okay?
Yes, well, we can see the big one. You might consolidate it so that there's only one large one large slide at a time.
Yeah, we see your version. Dave, you need the presentation version for us.
So Dave, up at the top under display settings.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, good to go, thank you. I don't do this very often, so I need a little coaching. First slide up this evening, it's a short presentation, it's just an intro slide saying tree preservation code update, part of the city manager's report this evening. Briefly, what's happened so far, the city council directed the manager to move forward with admitting the tree preservation code. That was done this summer. Then following, on September 27th, the city council received a follow-up report. That report gave an analysis of the current tree code, was commentary on areas of improvement. Part of that discussion dealt with Gary Oaks, but that was only part of it. There were other sections that were also discussed at length. The city, we recommended that the city move forward with hiring an outside consultant to prepare a public participation plan as a part of the update, and the council agreed with this process. But along the way, we also found out that not just do the public participation plan, but have the consultant do the entire code update as well. Last piece is a consideration of placing the tree preservation code as part of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. You've heard comments from the staff already this evening, as well as from the public. A staff recommendation is to pull this from the amendment process so that we can have a more rigorous discussion on, on tree preservation. And I think in was a better, a superior product, because when we get into the whole cop plan amendment process, as other council members may be aware, it is very much a sausage-making process. We did meet with Burke Consultants. We asked them to prepare a draft scope of work. Again, it includes a tree preservation code update and a detailed public participation plan. The detailed public participation plan was in, for two reasons. One is to address some of the equity issues that the council speaks about. And secondly, oftentimes, tree preservation codes go the wrong way and take an extraordinary long period of time to get to approval. We thought by having a more detailed public participation plan, we would be more effective. Estimated cost is $60,000. The timeframe could potentially begin in December 2021 or January 2022 and be completed by October 2021. Contents of the scope of work and public participation, there are a variety of different topics. I won't read them all, but you can see that it's quite extensive. We've already begun the process of identifying stakeholders and audiences. But we have yet to really formalize public engagement strategies and activities, but that's something that the city staff would work with the consultant if the contract is approved. One of the other things that's really important is the comment collection. We recognize that as we go through this process, we'll think we'll be towards the end, and we usually will have people who come at the very last who want to comment on something. So we want to make sure that even if that happens, we can provide or an opportunity for, for late comments. The legislative meetings are really are really with the public in, in general meetings. Secondly, with the parks board, who have expressed an interest in this process, the planning commission and the city council. Again, we have developed a preliminary contact list that's been included in your documents this evening. And we also did some initial demographics and tree canopy maps, which I'm going to share with you this evening. The first map on the left is basically a median family income map, which shows that the higher incomes are on the west side of the city, and the lower incomes are on the east side of the city. And if you take a look at a heat severity map in 2020, the lower or milder heat severity is found on the west side of the city, and the higher ones are found on the east side of the city. The east side of the city also seems to have a higher amount of concrete and asphalt, which generates in part the increase in the heat. But nevertheless, you do have low-income neighborhoods that are affected by heat severity to some extent. More on public outreach and engagement guiding principles. I did list them, be inclusive, make public engagement enjoyable and accessible. We've had some initial conversations about bringing students, young students into the process. Stay in touch, provide easy and convenient access, document, learn, and gain support for final code. Then I also included on this graphic a map which shows the tree canopy coverage in Lakewood currently. Again, on the west side, you have greater than 35%. On the east side, you have a significantly less amount of tree canopy. And this will be something I believe that the tree preservation code will attempt to address. Scope of work continued. We were proposing some kickoff meetings and ongoing coordination with city staff, further tree canopy assessment by a variety of different means, including census blocks, tree code, current Lakewood tree code evaluation, and this includes review of current exemptions. Much of what was discussed and some of the public comment is dealt dealing with that specific area, and that's why I placed it in red. One of the things that we are suggesting is establishment of an ad hoc tree advisory committee, where the consultant would provide facilitation. The ad hoc advisory committee, any ad hoc advisory committee is listed, the requirements for such are listed in the Lakewood Municipal Code. And in some of the other documents I provided to the city council, the code section was, was provided. Yes, there would be stakeholder engagement, and you would receiving comments from a variety of sources of individuals. Those that have provided testimony this evening and others who I think may have a different perspective on this subject would like to provide testimony as well. Review the legislative process, I've already spoken to that. Cost estimates been provided, and some of the documents that were given to the council showed the qualifications of the consultant and the subconsultant. The next steps for the city council is review the scope of work and the participation plan. If it is acceptable, bring back a contract for services to the city council for consideration adoption in your November-December timeframe. Council will need to constitute an ad hoc committee. Suggested that the council advertise for appointments, require a one-page application, and an end date for applications submitted. Council then would review those applications and make appointments. A big issue here is the council will have to determine the size of the ad hoc committee. The assumption is that the ad hoc committee work plan, which is required by code, would correspond to the approved scope of work. Burke would then start conducting the kickoff meetings, the early ones, if the contract is approved soon, will begin most likely in December, where we fine-tune the scope of work and we begin on task 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3, and thereafter begin work with the ad hoc advisory committee, either in mid-January or early February. And I'm going to conclude with this slide, which just says, if there are council questions or comments, I'll try to answer the best I can. And with that, Mr. Anderson, I return the matter back to you.
Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Buhr, for moving forward with doing that. Can you just clarify? If we embark on this process, you indicated October 2021 as an end date of a product, and I know that's not right. Is that supposed to be October 2022? Then you figured we would reach a point of where we would have a, a recommendation from this process for a new ordinance?
Yes, my apologies if I said 2021, I meant 2022. But the, the goal would be to bring before the city council a final document in, in that month, in that year.
Okay, and that the, the, I appreciate the putting together an ad hoc committee that would include some of the folks that have been advocating for the new ordinance, as well as some folks who perhaps have not been because they're okay with the status quo, and that would, so that we can get a consensus recommendation from an ad hoc committee. The last thing you mentioned was task 2-1, 2-2, and 2-3 would commence commensurate with getting the ad hoc committee formed and that they would be being worked on and so that they had already been being worked on when the committee came in. Could you refresh me what 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3 are?
Sure. 2.1 is a kickoff meeting and ongoing coordination. That's really, really with city staff. And one of the things that they want to do is look at land use and building permit reviews as well as tree canopy management in rights of way and parkland. So it's collecting information so that we can provide that to the public in the ad hoc committee. 2.2 is the Lakewood Tree Canopy Situation Assessment. They would be looking in a series of different documents, the purpose of which is to try to determine the amount of tree canopy. One of the things that we're looking at is looking at it on a census block level and determine what the tree canopy is per block. I think we might be able to refine that a little bit more, but that's something that we're currently working on. However, we will not be able to determine the type of tree that's, that is in that canopy. There are other ways to do that using the Coastal Atlas, and then there is a South Sound Oak Initiative, which also provides information on locations of oaks in Lakewood. We would also use that information as well. And then 2.3 is the Lakewood Tree Code Evaluation. And where that is looking at is comparing Lakewood's tree codes with other codes to see where we have deficiencies. And there's more discussion on that on page 575.
Okay, and it would be the, this ad hoc committee and the consultant would move through a process that would also consider whether there are any unique would move through a process that would also consider whether there are any unique code provisions related to Gary Oaks that would be appropriate and able to be incorporated. Somewhere in the scope?
It's it's not in the scope currently, but it can be added. But likely you're going to see that 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 conversation talked about under the term landmark or historic trees. And I would imagine that will be a topic or a section with any new revised code. But we can certainly include a discussion of Gary Oaks into the scope of work if that's the council's desire.
Well, I, you know, again, my sense of the comments we've been getting from the public that there's very much a Gary Oak focus that is somewhat greater than than an all-tree focus. And I would certainly want to see something like that incorporated if we decide to go this route. The second thing is, at the end of the process, is the ad hoc committee facilitated by the consultant want to submit a proposal directly to the council, or were you envisioning them submitting it somewhere else?
I I think it's going to be a combination. You'll have an ad hoc committee recommendation. But my intent would be to also provide recommendations from the Parks Board as well as the City Planning Commission. And hopefully they'll all line up the same way. And that will be the the desire in the end, yes, is to have recommendations that are across the board similar.
Okay, and given the October 2022 end date of this process, that's about two months longer than a process that simply used the Planning Commission to examine a 2022 docket. Is that about right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say that I support the ad hoc committee, and I'm glad that that is a part of it. I was also pleased to see the inclusion of environmental equity tools that are already out there and being made available. And also that we have a clear outcome that we address environmental justice issues as a part of this effort. So excellent. I wanted to ask for clarity that the $60,000 would cover the formation, both the formation of the public participation public participation plan slate and the implementation of the plan?
Yes.
Excellent. And my last note, I was I'm going to echo what Councilmember Brandstetter said. It's my understanding that that our desire is to separate, at least it's my desire, to separate the tree preservation code from the the Planning Commission Council docket in order to move faster, to have more public participation and to and to be free of that of that timeline. And so I'm concerned that it might be longer. That's it for me.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for you, Mr. Buhr. We heard a little bit of public comment tonight about the interest in perhaps a ad hoc committee or a citizens advisory council, not just on the tree preservation code, but perhaps on other climate change issues with regard to that large climate change chapter we drafted and adopted some time ago. So my my thought is perhaps that ad hoc committee is properly appointed with people who have some skills and expertise perhaps could be used on a broader basis than just this. Would that be fair?
That's a possibility. You know, to me, this tree preservation code is not just about Gary Oaks. It's it's also about environmental justice, which the documentation shows is a very clear issue.
Right.
But but it's also about climate change.
And it plays into our existing climate change.
Right. And right now, right now, the City Planning Commission is working on a work plan recommendations to provide to the City Council probably the first quarter of 2022, where we'll be talking very specifically about further actions on environment. So that work is underway, and I don't want to slow it down for the ad hoc committee.
Right. And my last question to you, perhaps for edification, because it's probably something in the minds of other folks, and we heard a little bit about it tonight from public comment. What are the the sort of upside and or downside to consideration of an interim moratorium on tree permits in the city of Lakewood? And there are two tracks with that question. One is the vesting issue with regard to commercial issues. And the second is the issue with regard to the general neighborhood lot owner of 17,500 or less. So do you have any thoughts on the viability or advisability of such a moratorium?
Well, I want to be clear what the moratorium covers. Are we talking all trees? Are we talking just Gary Oaks? And so I was not clear from the conversation this evening. That's what this was about.
Well, it wasn't. I mean, there was obviously public comment that was brought up on this issue, and it's new to us. Not new, but it's renewed comment that we've heard over the course of the last few months. So you can answer it as to both Gary Oak specifically and trees in general.
You're putting me on a spot in a tough question. I would I would tell you that if you're going to do a moratorium, you still have to do emergency actions to allow for trees to be removed. And immediately what comes to mind is the utilities. You still are going to require them to be able to remove trees as necessary for utility line repairs and maintenance. You're likely going to have some storms. We have currently a couple of houses in Lakewood where we have trees through houses. Obviously, those will have to be removed.
Right.
There's some things that are quite reasonable. The the other way of handling this is interim regulations to deal with the exemptions. But even that is something that you need to carefully consider. My preference on this is this is something that the council wants would be to come and return with a report that gives you the information and you can take a look at it. I'm uncomfortable saying something and speaking out of turn and on something of this subject, it being taken the wrong way.
Absolutely. And I don't mean to be a sole person directing you to do any further digging or investigation. My last question to you, David, is just to maybe clarify for the public that even in some of those commercial projects like that, we've heard a lot about warehousing, there is additional process that those applicants must go through, such as SEPA. Isn't that correct?
Yes, the the one project that has been controversial has been the Panatoni Project. We have challenged them on their their calculation of tree area. We are doing third-party review on their biology reports. We have not approved a project. We have not approved a tree removal permit, and we have not approved SEPA. So we are doing our due diligence and collecting our information. And then once we have the information, then we'll make a decision.
And that's under existing code.
It's under existing code. The piece I need that that people forget about, and it's easy to forget about, is when you talk about trees, it's the tree preservation code, it's SEPA, combined together, and then then our critical areas ordinance.
Right.
When those three things combine, there is there is always some level of tree mitigation. The exception is when you have the exemption on residential properties greater than 17,000 square feet.
Right, or less than, right, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think it just helps to kind of illuminate some of the issues so people are reminded that there is process involved. So thank you.
We do take great care on this subject. I'll tell council members. It's something that we are sensitive towards.
Ms. Farmer.
To follow up on Deputy Mayor Whalen's question about moratoriums, I wasn't sure this was the right time to bring it up. I was going to wait for council comments, but I would like to ask for more information on a moratorium or similar action and what that would entail. I think it would be helpful for some of the conversation and and the public comment. I'd like to know more about what the options are.
Mr. Buhr.
Is there a consensus from the council that you would like to move forward with the street preservation code, including some discussion or more further details on Gary Oaks? Or is that something you wish to wait on?
I think we want to move forward. I don't see anybody that doesn't speak up if you have a different opinion.
Ad hoc committee creation, as you've discussed it tonight, Dave.
Sorry, I had it pretty couldn't hear that, Mr. Whalen.
I'm just trying to clarify what he is seeking consensus for, just so that we're all on the same sheet.
My under, I'm having some difficulty hearing you, Mr. Whalen. Mr. Caulfield?
Mayor and council, what Mr. Buhr is asking for is consensus to bring back this contract for consideration and action by this body that would then allow us to move forward with implementation, which would include the creation of a city council-appointed ad hoc committee.
Does anybody object to moving forward on that?
I don't object, but I but I am concerned about the timeline. So is there the possibility of talking about moving that up or?
It is something that I can talk with the consultant about, but I need to be careful with the council. If on something like this, if you move too quickly, it could have other other impacts.
Fair enough.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I I I'm very interested in the process that Mr. Buhr is outlining. I think that on November 15th, we will have an action item regarding the comprehensive plan docket. And if we choose to then take this process out of the hands of the Planning Commission via that process, you know, I'd like to then see and and move relatively quickly at putting this alternative process in place. Just want to do the first thing first, even if it's at the same meeting, okay, that we deal with that. The other the other issue that I would not want to wait on is adjusting the fee code to establish some initial fee other than zero for for a tree permit, which I don't necessarily believe has to be tied to this process, although this process could recommend amending what we do with it. But I would like to see a process of where we can do a fee code amendment for 2022 to move away from the zero-cost permits, thus with no penalties for doing things without a permit because of of that, the way our code is set up because of that. So that that's sort of where it is. I think that having a contract to look at and a and an ordinance with the process to establish an ad hoc committee would be something I think we would want to do quickly or even concurrently if we choose to take this off of the comprehensive plan docket.
Hey, anyone else? Mr. Buhr, Mr. Caulfield, do you have the guidance you need?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment regarding a tree permit fee. You know, since fees are based on actual work that our staff does, that will require, you know, a fiscal analysis. And, you know, that that that'll take some time. So that I don't believe that that's something we'd be able to have for you as part of your November 22nd study session. Though I can certainly go back and talk with the finance department to see if that's something that could be accommodated, say sometime in, you know, first quarter of 2022, if that's City Council's desire.
Wouldn't another option be considering it when we consider other fee adjustments on an annual basis?
That's correct, Mayor, and that's actually coming forward to you in two weeks and that's that's what I'm saying. Yeah. So, you know, and another option would be just to do a cursory review of what other cities charge, and we could put something like that in place. However, the policy on our fees has been that they will recover a portion of our actual costs that we incur.
All right. You have anything else, Mr. Caulfield?
A few more updates, if I if I may, Mayor and Council. Earlier this afternoon, I heard back from Sound Transit. As you know, they're moving forward with restoring Amtrak service along the Point Defiance bypass rail line. Their next step is actually this weekend, the FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, will be out to evaluate, test, observe the running of two round trips of Amtrak through this corridor. And it is likely if it passes muster with FRA, that Sound Transit will give the go-ahead to both Washdawt Rail as well as Amtrak to restore services, probably right before Thanksgiving. If for some reason, FRA does not give their their blessing, and there's more work to do, then then the restoration of Amtrak services through this corridor will then extend out into sometime in January or even later in 2022. So just wanted to pass that along. So we should know in the next two weeks or so what the outcome of 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 the FRA review review is. Also, I wanted to report that Amazon, Amazon apparently has been giving away substantial amounts of money to all kinds of organizations and entities. And they approached us last week and have offered $15,000 in support of parks and recreation programs, as well as $15,000 in support of South Sound Military and Communities partnerships. We're in the process of following up with, you know, do they have any special conditions or strings that are attached to those monies? And at this point in time, we it doesn't believe so. And so, given the amount of money, however, the City Council's code does require us to bring this forward for acceptance, because any financial donation over $5,000 needs to be approved by the council. And obviously, these are two $15,000 donations. So look for that coming up hopefully by the end of the year as part of a future City Council agenda. Also, Silicon Boulevard between Lakewood Drive and Gravel Lake Drive, as well as impacting all the way down at Bridgeport, will be closed. Pierce County Sewer Utility is coming in, and they're going to be replacing that sewer main that partially collapsed earlier this summer. This is actually the permanent solution to actually replace that line. Unfortunately, that part of the roadway is going to be shut down for at least three months, actually beginning today through February 1 of 2022. Of course, if Pierce County can get the work done sooner, they will. But just wanted to pass that on. And so we've been sharing sharing that with the community. And our Public Works Engineering Department has been working very closely with Pierce County to coordinate detour routes and 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 things and things along those lines. Also, Pierce County has been in contact with us. Actually, now they're in regular communication with us and that they do plan on reopening the county-owned Lakewood Community Center to many of the pre-COVID-19 uses that existed there, including leasing a space to the city of Lakewood for our senior activity center. And so we're reinitiating that. And it could be that we actually have our senior act, knock on wood. uh, no guarantees here, but maybe we do have our senior activity center up and running um, before the end of the year. Um, however, we will need a new lease agreement effective January 1st, 2022, since our previous lease, lease actually expired last year. But again, if we get up and going in, say, November or December, um, the county has already commented that they, they would provide the space to us at, at, at no cost um, in, in, in this particular, in this particular year. Um, we also continue to have discussion with the Nisqually Tribe about a joint meeting. Um, the latest idea is to have that joint meeting as part of your next regular meeting on November 15th, two weeks from this evening. And the way it would work is that, um, you know, the City Council has on your docket a proclamation recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. And, um, from that, and that's going to be typically the City Council presents that to the Nisqually Tribe. And so from that point forward, then there would be, um, a joint meeting between, um, the tribal council um, and, and, and this body. But, um, more, more to come, more to come on that. Um, and then just, um, some, um, some calendaring items. So this Friday, Association of Washington Cities is going to have their annual cities on tap. Um, it will be a virtual event. Uh, this is an opportunity for city and town elected officials and others, uh, to get an update on key priorities. Association of Washington Cities will be pursuing in 2022, particularly as it relates to, um, their legislative priorities, um, once the state legislature convenes in the middle part of, of, of January. Um, also a friendly reminder that, um, our community cleanup is going to be on November 6th and 7th, this Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And if you're still interested in volunteering or helping out, let us know there, um, we can find a spot for you. And then, um, next week, uh, next Tuesday, United Way is having their fifth annual From Poverty to Possibilities event. It is a virtual event, and if you haven't attended one of those in the past, um, they are quite engaging, and I would certainly recommend it if you have the time. Um, it is a bit of a commitment. It's from 8:00 AM to noon again, uh, next Tuesday from, um, on, on, on November 9th. And I know myself and a, a number of our staff will be attending that as well. Um, the next day on November 10th, uh, the city, our Economic Development Department, led by our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton, will be facilitating in partnership with Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board, a business forum focusing on recovery and resiliency as it relates to post-COVID-19 pandemic. And, um, we do have some expert panelists who will be participating at this event. Again, it's a virtual event from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Uh, we're going to have Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, uh, our Pierce County Executive, Bruce Stanmeyer, and our very own Mayor, uh, Don Anderson as some, as some panelists and, and many others as well. So if you're interested in attending that, um, I know I did send you the registration um, link, link on that, or just let myself or the city clerk know, and we'll get you squared away there. Um, so with that, Mayor and Council, that's my report. Thank you.
Questions for the City Manager? Hearing none. Move to council comments. Ms. Bell?
I am good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Moss?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Volkey?
I just want to say I drove down, uh, Gravel Lake Drive, the new section, and it looks great. I, I thought, even though it's not done, right, but the pavement's down and the, the curbing's in, and I just, I think when it's all done, it's going to be a wonderful stretch of roadway. They've done a really nice job so far. So, and I guess they're closing it again? Is that the deal? Pretty soon, or they're working on another stretch?
That's, that's, that's correct, Councilmember Volkey. Um, earlier today, they closed the stretch, Gravel Lake Drive, actually, from Nyansha um, down to Veterans. And the reason being is because now they're beginning to undertake the improvements, the big roundabout that's going to be built at Veterans and Gravel Lake Drive, and then also the improvements all the way down to Washington Boulevard. So that's the next phase. Um, that's expected to take us through the February, March, April timeframe, depending, you know, weather dependent. Um, local access is available, uh, obviously for folks on Gravel Lake Drive um, from Nyansha and Pacific Highway, um, but generally speaking, it's closed to, through traffic, um, now that Nyansha is reopened.
And I think the roundabout looks great, too. The nice concrete roundabout, I, I think seemed to be working the other day, so hopefully it'll all, all come together, signs right in the middle the way it's supposed to be. So I, I think it looks, I think we're going to be really proud of that stretch when it's all done in the next year or so, right? So sometime next year, we'll get it all done. But so far, so good. I was impressed. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Volkey, the, uh, the, the, the full project, all the way down to Interlock, and which will be the phase after that, is expected to be completed next October, no later than November of 2022.
Ms. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was excited to see the fall cleanup event on the calendar, but I'm really sad that I'm going to be out of state. I'm going to miss it. That's why you don't see me on the volunteer list. But I encourage everybody to, to come and, and bring their items and be speedy. I see that we need people to be speedy when they're dropping off their, dropping off their items. So please make a note of that. Um, SHAPE, the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, has settled on a regular meeting cadence. And so starting December 8th, we'll be meeting once a month on Wednesday afternoons. So I will give you updates as we go along. And the Sex Offender Policy Board, we're working on our final reports to the legislature, so more to come as those take shape. Thank you.
Unintended, right? Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, in reference to, uh, you know, the discussions we had as a council regarding, uh, uh, South Sound 911 and the, uh, budgeting process for Pierce County, uh, the South Sound 911 Board met this past Wednesday and got some valuable clarifications from both the county executive and the county council chair. And that seems to be that, that, that issue regarding that the South Sound 911 Board would get the, uh, the, the ability to concur with any use of the 1% uh, public safety tax money uh, is, uh, is going to be a part of the process. And I, so, uh, it, it seems that although we had something that got started because the two organizations had different budgeting timelines and um, we're getting engaged, I think that the, uh, uh, the relationship and, and, and regarding that is, uh, is sound and is going to be worked out in this instance and going forward in the future. Uh, that's all I really have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, just a couple.
You're not coming through.
Hold on.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first of all, the Veterans Proclamation, thank you for doing that. I think it strengthens our relationship, obviously, with our military partners and veterans, and look forward to when we can get together with our 22 Striker Brigade Community Connector, like we have done annually. So I look forward to that. Uh, second, on the work release, excuse me, on the cleanup of Clover Creek, we heard public comment tonight that there's some perhaps trash down there, and I wonder when we have work release programs up and running, if that might not be a good opportunity for them to use their, their time wisely to help clean up trash in Clover Creek and elsewhere in the city. So I throw that out there because that's something we should attend to. Um, third, on the community cleanup this weekend, I regret, I'd love to participate. I'm going to be at the state, uh, track tournament for my daughter who qualified for state, so I look forward to that. So she can finally outrun me, which is a good thing. Didn't take much, but I'm glad she did it. And what was the last thing? Oh. Make sure you vote and get those ballots in. We, uh, as we heard tonight, the whole veterans thing, you know, we have these duties, responsibilities, and privileges as citizens. And one of those is to exercise our right to vote. So I hope all of us encourage all of our family members and fellow neighbors to do so. Thank you.
So, uh, your daughter doesn't try to embarrass you in front of her friends. Uh, it's the state cross-country meet, not the state track meet.
It's one of those running things. Yeah.
Uh, I just had, had one comment on the, on the roundabout. I, I like roundabouts, except when I went into a New Zealand that seemed to have octopus arms on it. But, uh, and I think this may be corrected when it's all striped and completed. But the folks coming off of I-5 and continuing what was straight onto Gravel Lake, past the Country Club entrance, seem to have, uh, very little in the way of understanding the yield concept of the roundabout. Uh, so, uh, they blow through, uh, when people are making, you know, what would have been a left turn and going down Nyansha, coming at them. Uh, I've already seen a couple of close calls here, because the people have a pretty straight shot there. So like I said, maybe that changes a little bit when the lanes are restripped and, and completed. So they have a little angle to come in there, but, uh, otherwise the yield sign should probably be about three times as big as it is now. Um, but I have no traffic engineering training at all. I just sample through there. Anything else to come before the council? Well, then, thank you. And, uh, I would note that it's now 12:01 in San Antonio. My first meeting was 8:00 in the morning. So, uh, I'm a real burden or $1.95. We're turned.